See, people come fast.
They do.
Yeah, so.
Do you get, do they?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to our May 24th, 2021 Rigor City Council meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk to call me all.
Councillor Long-Curtis.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin.
Present.
Councillor Runyon.
Councillor Runyon is not here and he is out of town.
Okay. Councillor Randall.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
Present.
Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councillor Long-Curtis. I believe we need to add item 10B. That's the consent agenda and the disposition of surplus police vehicles is on the staff agenda, staff report, but not on the agenda. I just wanted to be clear that's on there when we, if we're going to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Well, seconded that is Councillor Richardson.
It's been moved by Councillor Long-Curtis and seconded by Councillor Richardson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye, McLaughlin.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item six, or excuse me, 5A actually, is a presentation by Mr. Leonard Farr regarding the Brownfield Grant Project Update. Mr. Farr, I see you right there in the middle of my screen. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Great, my name is Leonard Farr and I work for StanTech and we are the city's consultant hired to assist with the Brownfield Program. So I'll give a brief presentation and then open up for questions. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, are you guys able to see that? Okay.
Yes, I can see it fine. I assume everybody else can too.
Okay, great. So back in the fall of 2020, there was a coalition formed by the, that consists of the city, MCAD, and the Port of the Dows for the purpose of addressing brownfields in Wasco County and in the Dows. So I've got a definition of a brownfield here. A brownfield is a property where expansion, redevelopment, or reuse is complicated by the presence or suspected presence of environmental contamination. And I've got a couple slides here just illustrating some potential brownfields. You know, these are sites, a gas station, a dry cleaner, a former industrial sites that may have contamination or be perceived to have contamination. You know, these types of sites would be potential brownfields. You know, the degree of utilization of a site is also sometimes used to define a brownfield. So, you know, here we have a large empty commercial structure and contamination can mean hazardous substances that have entered the ground due to some kind of release, but it can also mean building materials such as asbestos or lead-based paint, which is, you know, what you would expect at a site like a former vacant commercial building. This is kind of the overview of the grant. So we applied for grant funding back in fall of 2020. The application was funded by the Environmental Protection Agency. The grant value is $600,000 and the grant period is three years, starting October 1 of 2020 and ending September of 2023. And these are the activities that are typically performed with this type of grant. We've got community outreach and education. Phase one and two environmental site assessments are really the meat and potatoes of these types of grants typically. And that, that, that can include asbestos-regulated building material type surveys. Also cleanup and reuse planning is an element of, of the grant. So if contamination of some kind is identified at a site, grant funding can be used to develop a plan to address that contamination. Reuse planning as well is kind of a site-specific activity. So if we have a particular site that we want to help revitalize, we could develop a plan. We can do a market analysis, just things to try and help move the redevelopment of that property along. And we can also do planning on an area-wide basis. You know, and that, that might mean, usually that's an area of 10 acres or so where there might be a high prevalence of brownfields. And these are some reasons to address brownfields, to reduce crimes, guarding illegal dumping vandalism, to address the loss of tax-based jobs and property value. Brownfields often impact the values of neighboring properties and brownfields can also pose a threat to public health and the environment. That is my presentation and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Does anybody have any questions on the city council?
Mayor Mays, I have a question.
Yes, Council Randall.
Yes, is there, you have a map that shows some different lots in different colors. Is there a legend that goes along with that that explains what we're looking at on that?
Yeah, I think you're talking about my cover slide. So as a lead-up to the EPA grant, the city also received some grant funding from Business Oregon. And that money was utilized to develop an inventory of brownfields. So we do have a deliverable that presented the findings of that study. But essentially, this is a ranking that you're seeing on the screen here. And this is obviously downtown the Dows. We did, the inventory did extend further to the west out Second Street. So red are the higher priority brownfields and, you know, followed by orange and then yellow. So just generally, you can see the results of, of the inventory in this figure. So this was a tool that was utilized to identify brownfields and prioritize sites for potential participation in the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Farr? I've got a real basic question. Where does the name Brownfield come from? You know?
Yeah, I think it's just a play on the word greenfield. You know, it's, it's, a greenfield is kind of a former, maybe a former agricultural property on the edge of a city that, you know, often gets redeveloped as cities expand their footprint. And the whole idea with a brownfield is rather than expanding the footprint of your city, brownfields are a good way to better utilize property that's already within the boundaries of the city. So yeah, I think it's just a play on the word greenfield.
Thank you. I've wondered that for a long time. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, this is McLaughlin. I'm looking at the map again and I look at property number one, which is located, it looks like, I can't tell that street. I think that's industrial and it's fuel supply. Is that the source of the contamination on position one?
You know, to be honest, I, I haven't looked at the results of the inventory in a bit of time. That's not what our focus has been for the last six months or so. As, as I recall, the number one site may have been a piece of property owned by Wasco County. And it was adjacent to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Long Curtis. I believe we need to add item 10B. That's the consent agenda and the disposition of surplus police vehicles is on the staff report, but not on the agenda. I just wanted to be clear that's on there if we're going to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Councilor Richardson.
It's been moved by Councilor Long Curtis and seconded by Council Richardson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye, McLaughlin.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item six, or excuse me, 5A actually, is a presentation by Mr. Leonard Farr regarding the Brownfield Grant Project Update. Mr. Farr, I see you right there in the middle of my screen. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Great. My name is Leonard Farr, and I work for Stan Tech, and we are the city's consultant hired to assist with the Brownfield program. So I'll give a brief presentation and then open up for questions. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, are you guys able to see that? Okay.
Yes, I can see it fine. I assume everybody else can too.
Okay, great. So, back in the fall of 2020, there was a coalition formed that consists of the city, MCAD, and the Port of the Dows for the purpose of addressing brownfields in Wasco County and in the Dows. So I've got a definition of a brownfield here. A brownfield is a property where expansion, redevelopment, or reuse is complicated by the presence or suspected presence of environmental contamination. And I've got a couple slides here just illustrating some potential brownfields. You know, these are sites, a gas station, a dry cleaner, a former industrial sites that may have contamination or be perceived to have contamination. You know, these types of sites would be potential brownfields. You know, the degree of utilization of a site is also sometimes used to define a brownfield. So, you know, here we have a large empty commercial structure. And contamination can mean hazardous substances that have entered the ground due to some kind of release, but it can also mean building materials such as asbestos or lead-based paint, which is, you know, what you would expect at a site like a former vacant commercial building. This is kind of the overview of the grant. So we applied for grant funding back in fall of 2020. The application was funded by the Environmental Protection Agency. The grant value is $600,000, and the grant period is three years, starting October 1 of 2020 and ending September of 2023. And these are the activities that are typically performed with this type of grant. We've got community outreach and education. Phase one and two environmental site assessments are really the meat and potatoes of these types of grants typically. And that can include asbestos-regulated building material-type surveys. Also cleanup and reuse planning is an element of the grant. So if contamination of some kind is identified at a site, grant funding can be used to develop a plan to address that contamination. Reuse planning as well is kind of a site-specific activity. So if we have a particular site that we want to help revitalize, we could develop a plan. We can do a market analysis, just things to try and help move the redevelopment of that property along. And we can also do planning on an area-wide basis. You know, and that might mean, usually that's an area of 10 acres or so where there might be a high prevalence of brownfields. And these are some reasons to address brownfields, to reduce crimes, guarding illegal dumping vandalism, to address the loss of tax-based jobs and property value. Brownfields often impact the values of neighboring properties, and brownfields can also pose a threat to public health and the environment. That is my presentation, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Does anybody have any questions on the City Council?
Mayor Mays, I have a question.
Yes, Council Randall.
Yes, you have a map that shows some different lots in different colors. Is there a legend that goes along with that that explains what we're looking at on that?
Yeah, I think you're talking about my cover slide. So as a lead-up to the EPA grant, the city also received some grant funding from Business Oregon, and that money was utilized to develop an inventory of brownfields. So we do have a deliverable that presented the findings of that study. But essentially, this is a ranking that you're seeing on the screen here, and this is obviously downtown the Dows. We did, the inventory did extend further to the west out Second Street. So red are the higher priority brownfields, and, you know, followed by orange and then yellow. So just generally, you can see the results of the inventory in this figure. So this was a tool that was utilized to identify brownfields and prioritize sites for potential participation in the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Farr? I got a real basic question. Where does the name Brownfield come from? You know?
Yeah, I think it's just a play on the word greenfield. You know, a greenfield is kind of a former, maybe a former agricultural property on the edge of a city that, you know, often gets redeveloped as cities expand their footprint. And the whole idea with a brownfield is rather than expanding the footprint of your city, brownfields are a good way to better utilize property that's already within the boundaries of the city. So yeah, I think it's just a play on the word greenfield.
Thank you. I've wondered that for a long time. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, this is McLaughlin. I'm looking at the map again, and I look at property number one, which is located, it looks like, I can't tell that street. I think that's industrial and it's fuel supply. Is that the source of the contamination on position one?
You know, to be honest, I haven't looked at the results of the inventory in a bit of time. That's not what our focus has been for the last six months or so. As I recall, the number one site may have been a piece of property owned by Wasco County, and it was adjacent to a park. You know, I may not have that right. So yeah, I don't recall for sure what that site number one is on the edge of that graphic.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Long Curtis.
Yes, I was on council at the time. This was initially presented by Matthew Klebs and Carrie Pippenich. And those sites, we haven't done environmental studies on them. Those sites are based on history and expectation of what is probably found there. And then the numbering doesn't mean that that would be the order that we're going to go in, because of course they're private property, some of them, and some private property owners may not be interested in a cleanup even with assistance. So we don't actually know for sure what the contamination is. It's just likely based on what used to be there or what could be observed now.
Thank you. Well said.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. This is Richardson.
And Council Richardson.
Yes, what are the next steps? It sounds like we have another couple of years and presumably a fair amount of dollars left. What are the next steps in this grant-funded study?
Yeah, you know, we have had a few advisory committee meetings, or we call it our core Brownfield Advisory Committee. And that committee includes each, Carrie Pippenich from MCAD, it includes Dale McCabe and Jim Schwanoff from City of the Dows and Andrea Claus from Port of the Dows. It also includes a couple of people, Nate, probably from Business Oregon or Oregon Regional Solutions, has been involved in those meetings. So and we decided that really the next step needed to be to make the council aware of the project and that we're moving forward. One of the next steps we will implement will be some community outreach, just to publicize the program. As Commissioner Long Curtis mentioned, this is a project that requires voluntary participation. So if any of the property owners on this graphic that you see might be interested in participating in the program, they first have to find out about the program. So that's really the next step is to publicize the program and solicit participation in the program. And the core Brownfield Advisory Committee that I mentioned, they will be responsible for, if we get an application for participation, they will evaluate that application and make a decision about bringing that site in as a participant in the project.
And what do participants stand to gain by participating?
Yeah, so we can offer free services to those participants. So that's one of the direct benefits of participation in the program. A phase one environmental site assessment typically has a cost of about $5,000 if sampling is warranted. Those studies often cost $25,000 or so. You know, a bank would often require such studies if they were going to provide a loan for, you know, either a construction loan for the owner to make improvements to the property, or if there's a real estate transaction involved in redeveloping a piece of property, those studies would be required by the bank. So yeah, the main benefit of participation is getting work that they would normally have to pay for themselves, covered by the program.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Again, Mr. Farr, thank you for joining us, and thank you for the very thorough report. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Item six on the agenda is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes? I think I see somebody trying to connect to audio. Okay, one more time. Anybody in the audience would like to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda? Last call. Okay, moving on. Item seven is the city manager's report. Ms. Kruger.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I will be very brief. I just have one announcement for you tonight. I have been informed that our airport managers are going to be leaving. They have an opportunity to change their career or advance their career somewhere else. And so we only have them for about six more weeks. I'm already touching base and working with Click Attack County. There had been some discussion previously about perhaps making that a Click Attack County position instead of a contract. So we're working through whether or not that is an option. And if not, we would have to go through another process for management contracts. So I'll keep you posted on that. I just wanted to let you know tonight that that has happened. We have about six weeks until they leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight is city attorney's report. Mr. Jonathan Carr.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I have an even briefer update tonight in that I won't be having one. And so I'm just hard at work on some discrete assignments and trying to wrap up a few long-term ones, and I'll be hopefully ready to share those very soon. Thank you so much.
Well, since you don't have a report, I'll fill something in for you. I wanted to compliment you on your Ms. Cannon's attendance at the Lake of Oregon City's recent podcast, and your follow-up memo was very thorough. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. City Council reports. Councilor McLaughlin, you're first on my screen here.
You know, I think I'm going to pass. I don't have anything really to report tonight. I'm a bit surprised to hear about the airport managers. But sometimes that's the way it goes. So I have no report.
Thank you. Council Randall.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. All I have is I attended the Urban Renewal Commission and the Planning Commission meetings via YouTube. I'm not able to attend those as they take place, but these are available for anyone to watch if they want to stay up to date on current events in the city. And I'll let the other councillors who were there at those meetings speak to what was discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I attended a recent city council meeting, a recent urban renewal, and I fielded a few miscellaneous concerns from constituents. Julie, and you know about one because we've talked about it this afternoon. And I would say I have faith in our staff to deal with those problems that come up that are posed by occasional unfortunate bad actors in our community. That said, if, I guess, in thinking about it, if there's a rash of problems or concentration of problems or bad actors from one site or one area or one cause, and I feel like maybe we ought to have a discussion about that at council, but that's just sort of a general thought. Other than that, no other, nothing else to report.
Council Richardson, thank you for calling me this afternoon with that concern. I appreciate that the council, when they get concerns from citizens, that they pass them along to me so that we can work on them. So thank you for that.
You bet. Thanks, Julie.
Councilor Long Curtis.
So I attended the urban renewal meeting on May 18th, and the main items there were an approval of an amendment to the development and disposition agreement for the recreation building. Obviously, it was primarily around changes in the timeline for payments and when some things are due just because of coronavirus and the collapse of the roof, that kind of thing. Very standard typical approval for an amendment. And then the other thing which we as city council will have at the end of our meeting was an update on the First Street Scape project, which is very informative from Director Cannon and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item 10, which is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any councillor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have two items, as was noted previously, on the consent agenda. The first is the approval of the May 10 city council minutes, and the second is a recommendation to authorize surplus police vehicles. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Is that Council McLaughlin?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that one.
Okay, it's been moved by Council Long Curtis and seconded by Council McLaughlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
I see unanimous consent on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Item 11A is the contract review of the city manager, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for audit services. I trust that would be Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. You have before you my agenda staff report. It's for the authorization toward the contract number 2021-003 for professional agreement for auditing services. This year, the city finalized their three-year contract with Marina and Company that had been doing our services over the last 10 years. The city's practice is to solicit a request for proposals, an RFP, when each contract ends. And we did that this year. We came up with two proposals. One of them was Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick, and the other was Amqua Valley Financial. Our suggestion is to go with Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick. Their services were at the lowest bid, but they would also assist staff in various accounting, internal control, reporting questions, and will perform the financial report preparation. And I haven't had, I haven't got to meet with Tim Gillette yet, but he is a partner, and he is here with us this evening if anybody has any questions.
Thanks for those words, Angie. Mr. Mayor, councillors. Yes, I'm Tim Gillette. I'm the managing partner of Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick. Most people just call us TKW. It's a lot easier. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, look forward very much to working with the city.
Does anybody have any questions for either Ms. Wilson or Mr. Gillette? Councilor Long Curtis.
Yes, I had a question for Director Wilson. I noticed in the staff report that the bids, as far as the amounts, were separately sealed, so that when you were evaluating the proposals, you didn't necessarily know the cost at that time, and then that was brought into the discussion later. And I thought that was, I thought that was good. Is that something that you typically do for this, or was that a new add-on that you came up with?
We typically have a checklist that we go over, and that was one of the items that was on the checklist. And also, one of the biggest items for me was the professional services that we would get throughout the next three years of the contract.
Any other questions? Just a comment on my part. My thought, Marina did a very good job for us, and I'm looking forward to Mr. Gillette's firm. I looked through the proposal, and you guys have a lot of good credentials, a lot of good references, a lot of good experience. So we're looking forward to working with you, and you're working with a top-notch finance department there. So I'm sure everything will go very, very well. Anybody else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, please.
I move to authorize the award of contract number 2021-003 to Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick LLP for the provision of audit services to the City of the Dows, Columbia Gateway Urban Renewal Agency, and Columbia Gorge Regional Airport for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2021, 2022, and 2023 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the first fiscal year plus 3.5% annually thereafter.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I second the motion.
It's been moved by Council Long Curtis and seconded by Council Randall to move to authorize the award of the contract to Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, and thank you, Mr. Gillette, for being here. Again, we look forward to receiving your crystal-clear reports at the end of the fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Look forward to working with the city.
Thank you.
Item 12 is an amendment to contract agreement between the city and KPFF Consulting for the First Street Riverfront Connection Project. I trust that will be Ms. Cannon.
Yes, Mayor, members of city council. This evening, we're asking for consideration of amendment number 15 to contract number 2007-08-004. This was a contract that was originally executed in 2008 between the City of the Dows and KPFF Consulting Engineers for the First Street Riverfront Connection Project. That was a long time ago. So this project's been around a while. And amendment number 15 means that we've been working hard on it for a period of time as well. So this particular amendment is the very, very latest. We are about 90% complete with the design on the project. The phase we're about to enter into now is what we call right-of-way, the kind of the right-of-way phase where we complete the survey, the identification of any easements, as well as right-of-way land that the city would need to acquire in order to build the project. And that typically happens right at the tail end. So because this, for the reason we need the amendment is for two reasons. One is the project is extended a little longer than we anticipated, so we need to add some project management dollars into the project. But also, we need to pay for the services associated with this right-of-way phase. The addition to the contract is $72,208.75. So that is for a full contract amendment of $1.584,508 million. So it's a sizable contract with the addition of 72,000 additional. What I can say is that I'm really pleased with the progress we've been making as of late. I brought on someone to help me so that we could avoid some stops and starts. It's paid for not off of the grant, but out of the urban renewal money. That is like an extension of staff to help me keep this design contract moving, but also help herd the cats of our grant funds. When we have federal money involved, there are others that we need to consult with an awful lot, and it was a heavy load for me to manage on my own without a lot of stops and starts. So I'm pleased. We're moving right along. We had a really nice update at the Urban Renewal Board. That was PowerPoint. I didn't think to bring that tonight. I might be able to bring it another time if enough of you want. I know three members of this council sit on the renewal board. I'm happy to make a full presentation to this group if you're interested in the project. But for now, we really just hope that you'll approve this contract amendment so we can keep moving. Uh, but for now, we really just hope that you'll approve this um, this contract amendment so we can keep moving. And our hope is to get this project under construction in summer 2023. Um, and um, so some of the other next steps that are going to occur is we need to update our environmental survey work that's happening out on the site as well. So there will be some professionals out looking at the project and continuing this good work. The money is budgeted both in um, that will pay for this uh, contract amendment. It's budgeted in this current fiscal year, but also next fiscal year. So the money is there. We're just asking for your concurrence to approve the amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kara, go ahead.
Hi, I was just reviewing the uh, the agenda packet as Ms. Cannon was giving her uh, presentation. It appears that, at least in my version of the agenda, we're using um, a slightly older draft of the final uh, amendment number 15. Uh, the only difference and and uh, with the draft that uh, I approved is uh, the correction of a typo um, where it says mock 2023 in one of the paragraphs. It should say March 2023. Um, and then also uh, the footer will say amendment number 15 as opposed to amendment number 14. Um, and so I'm not sure why this one ended up here in the packet. Things get lost. But the uh, one that I think Ms. Cannon would like your approval on tonight would be the, the actual amendment number 15, which again, should be identical except for those two uh, typo corrections. And it's already been drafted.
Yeah, those two typos are on page one.
Well, the, the mock instead of March is on page one, and then the footer will say amendment number 14 on, well, the rest of the document. It should, it will say amendment number 15.
We don't have to um, pass a motion to approve the contract as amended or anything like that, do we? Or it's corrected, or?
Uh, as corrected would be just fine, but Julie can weigh in. It looks like she's about to.
Those are clerical changes, so you don't need to do an amendment for that.
Okay, we can just approve the contract. Any other comments or questions for the staff?
Mayor, council, just, just we have the motion language on, in the staff report on the last page, page 72 of the packet. So that's available for your use tonight.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Council Richardson.
I am pleased to move that we approve amendment number 15 to contract number 2007 dash oh eight dash double oh four. The July 31st, 2008 agreement by and between the City of the Dals and KPFF Consulting Engineers for the First Street slash Riverfront Connection Project. And authorize city manager to execute the amendment on the behalf of the city.
Thank you, Council. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Council Richardson and seconded by Council Long Curtis to approve the amendment to the contract with KPFF. Is there any more, is there any discussion?
I would just like to say I'm pleased to see us making uh, real headway on this longstanding project. I think people are going to be, uh, fellow residents will be encouraged and pleased as well as they start seeing some projects uh, implemented downtown.
I was at the urban renewal meeting on Tuesday as well, and um, I'm happy this is progressing. I'm a little disappointed it's going to take two more years, so I guess we have two more years to take Ms. Cannon up on your offer to keep the council updated periodically on the progress. Sounds like we have plenty of time to do so. Any more discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. McGlaughlin, aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Cannon. Item 13 is an amendment, or excuse me, dispos- the disposing of surplus real property. Uh, that, Mr. Kara, would you please uh, address the council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So uh, before you tonight is a discussion item. Um, and and a brief synopsis is listed in the agenda packet. I wanted to just sort of walk you through the analysis to sort of show you uh, the picture of where we are now. Uh, and so um, back in 2016, uh, the council adopted some new rules to figure out the ways in which the city can dispose of surplus property. That is property that is in excess of what we need and what we want, for whatever reason. Um, and so that process is still effective, and it's in the agenda packet as an attachment to this agenda staff report as attachment A. Fast forward two years later, uh, one of the properties that this council considered in April 2018 um, is the property that we're talking about tonight, and I'll refer to as the parcel for the rest of this uh, discussion. Uh, so the parcel is located uh, on in county map, 1N 13E 10BA as tax lot 7400. That parcel is in between, uh, let's see, uh, 18th Street and East scenic drive. Uh, and attachment uh, E in the packet uh, will show you a sort of satellite view to give you an idea of the parcel that we're talking about. Um, and so uh, back in April uh, 2018, uh, the council declared uh, after a public hearing that that property, that parcel would be surplus and resolved that it's interest, uh, the transfer of that parcel would further the public's interest. Uh, and so uh, staff tried to, it looks like based on all the evidence that I could find um, in the city's files on this matter, suggests that the city advertised that parcel for sale consistent with the sale procedure uh, and put a for sale sign on the property. Uh, and staff generally just acted uh, identically to how the council directed uh, at the April meeting. Um, but no bids came in, for whatever reason. Maybe the market wasn't as receptive to the idea as the council would have hoped. But that's okay, because the sale procedure talks about what to do in those situations also. So in those situations, after a parcel has been deemed surplus, um, the council doesn't need to have another public hearing or anything like that. Uh, the designation of the property as surplus holds, uh, so long as the resolution is still effective, and it is. And so according to the sale procedure, all we should do now uh, is bring it back, and by we, I mean staff, is bring it back to the city council for your further direction on the next step you'd like to take to dispose of the parcel. And one of the options is to advertise the parcel for sale, uh, just like we did. But uh, we can use the same or different terms uh, as the ones that were used in April of 2018. Back in April of 2018, the parcel was listed at a minimum sale price acceptable to the city, based by the city council, uh, at $30,000. If you take a look at attachment D to my staff report, you'll notice the uh, Wasco County Assessors Map, uh, I'm sorry, the Wasco County Tax and Assessment Department's evaluation of the parcel uh, increases incrementally year by year, which is what you'd expect with real property. And uh, according to the most recent publicly available data from the county's website, uh, it appears that as of the tax year 2020, the real market value of the parcel is $49,350, uh, which is a 67% increase uh, since April of 2018, when the council last considered this parcel for disposal. Uh, and so the task before you tonight and and the direction that staff is requesting is if you were to uh, re-advertise the parcel, what would you consider uh, to be a fair market value, given the information that you have, um, and given that it's been three years since you last looked at this? And uh, if not, another disposal option listed in the uh, sale procedure is to list the parcel with a local Realtor. Um, and the process for that, as I mentioned, is in the sale procedure, again, attachment A in the packet. The only issue with taking that choice today, well, today meaning in the, at the next meeting, uh, which isn't today at all, uh, would be that the staff is not currently authorized um, to do so. And so it would require an amendment to the resolution. And so um, staff is merely requesting council provide some direction on your thoughts on what to do with this parcel, since specifically the city has received at least um, one interested party's message about its status.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Thank you. So um, city attorney Kara said that one person or one entity had expressed interest, but are they able, under the current ordinance or under the, the current, the way things currently are, could they make an offer on that right now? Or is that on hold because of the dates in the old?
No, it, they couldn't make an offer now. Too much time has elapsed. And so um, there, there are, there are um, certain mechanisms that can work that probably would prevent the city from selling it at that price unless we could justify why we couldn't sell it for more, um, since so much time has passed. So that makes sense?
Thank you. I just wanted to double check that. Thanks.
City Attorney Kara, this is Dan. Repeat for me, if you would. What needs to be done such that we could authorize your direct staff to put the parcel for sale through um, real estate professional?
Uh, okay, so uh, if, if staff is interested in pursuing the disposition of this parcel by listing it with a local Realtor, all you have to do is uh, not tonight, but we will, staff will prepare a resolution, uh, an amendment to the existing resolution, uh, which would authorize staff to, to do so, uh, to act consistently with the sale procedure and to explore that auction. Uh, the current resolution, that, that is, that is attachment B, resolution number 18010, uh, merely authorizes staff to advertise the parcel. Uh, and so advertising for sales fundamentally different than listing it with a local Realtor. Uh, the next steps for staff would be, if you decided to go down the road of listing it with a local Realtor, would be a um, a public contracting solicitation that's outlined specifically in the sale procedure. And so it would be sort of like an intermediate uh, acquisition under um, public contracting, where we'll solicit bids, Realtors will apply. It, it's, it's, it's a bit of an involved process. If, if council decides to simply re-advertise the property at a different price consistent with its current or reflective of its current um, market value, it would be much simpler. Uh, it would be a different market now here three years later. Given how quickly parcels are moving in the Dals, it might be in the city's best interest to list it for sale in the newspaper, which is a relatively straightforward process. And just sort of see what sort of interest, as, as a way to gauge interest. Uh, and there's always the chance that someone might be interested and comes in at a price acceptable to the city just by us listing it in the paper, uh, as if we were a uh, private entity. Uh, i- if the council desires to go down the road of listing it with an, with an agent, um, it could always do that after a, another advertising round. Hopefully that answered your question, Council Richardson.
It did. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Kara, are you at liberty to disclose who the interested party was? Was it, for example, a neighbor or um?
Uh, I, I don't, um, I don't know what their relationship is to the parcel. I do know who they are. I have their contact information. Um, I, I understand that this same party was slightly interested in the same parcel uh, based off of some institutional knowledge that I have, and by digging through the former city attorney's files, uh, that interested party's name does come up in reference to this parcel previously. Um, and so it appears that that interested party has looked at this parcel at least for the past five years.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you would prefer that we go the advertisement route, and if, if we don't get anywhere with that, we would fall back on a real estate agent approach? Did I, or do, am I misreading your preference?
No, that, that's, um, I say as much in, in, in my uh, staff report, which is uh, you know, just from a practical standpoint. Staff is already authorized um, to solicit this parcel for sale consistent with the sale procedure uh, in the resolution. And so since it's been three years, and, and everybody here knows that I, I've only been in the Dallas for a little bit less than a year. And so I wasn't here three years ago. And so I, I'm looking at this pretty objectively. Uh, and properties are moving. And so I, I think that it, it makes a lot of sense practically to perhaps explore that option one more time, given how it may not have always been this way. Certainly not, maybe not three years ago.
And in this advertisement, would, would there be a, a price listed or?
Yes, that's exactly right. And so um,
That would be a consistent with the current market value as determined by the assessor's office?
No, not necessarily as determined by the assessor's office, but uh, it's a pretty, you know, um, standardized way of appraising properties without an actual appraisal. Uh, and so it should get the council an idea, because it appears the council may have relied on it in 2018.
Yeah, because I, I, sometimes I question whether the assessor's office sometimes doesn't have up-to-date information on real market value. Council Long Curtis?
Um, yes, so since this is going to be put up for sale, shouldn't we be discussing uh, our rationale for pricing it in an executive session rather than in public?
Uh, the discussion of the rationale is uh, something that I believe occurred three years ago uh, when this parcel was deemed uh, surplus.
I'm not talking about the rationale. I get that, but to determine a price that we want to put on it, I think that portion should be confidential as a real estate transaction.
It can be, if that's what the council decides. Uh, alth- although, at the end of any discussions, um, council will, council will need to provide uh, the minimum sale price acceptable to the city in open session. Um, and so however you end up there, right, the rationale of, of the valuation process, yes, it should be uh, put in the open session meeting minutes. But the rationale itself doesn't necessarily need to be.
Well, the next logical question is, would the city council like to go into executive session at the next meeting? Uh, since tonight would be out of the question, to determine a uh, a price that we would like to attach to this parcel property? Or just leave it up to the staff to determine it?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Richardson. I take Council Long Curtis's point. And were there another zero behind the likely price tag? I, I think that would behoove us to do uh, these sort of discussions in executive session, but since we're likely only talking about a couple or a few thousand dollars at most, plus or minus, feels like the consequences are relatively modest, and maybe we could just decide if we want it uh, to list the lot again and sort of give staff leeway with a, a minimum number.
Any other comments? Okay, um, I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, no, no motion, no motions required for this particular discussion item. Just clarification uh, on a path forward for staff to proceed with. And so i- it, it appears that the council may just be interested in having an executive session to discuss the valuation, and that's, that's easy enough. Uh, we can notice an executive session appropriately to, to discuss that briefly. Again, alternatively, if, I'll let the city manager take over.
All right, Jonathan. I, I only heard one council, one executive session, and one think it wasn't necessary. So I think that needs to be decided. And just while I have the floor, our next agenda is pretty full. So it would probably be the second meeting in June if they need an executive session.
Thank you.
This is McGlaughlin. I'm in favor of following um, Jonathan Kara's uh, suggestion that we go into, number one, advertising it through local newspaper. And then second step would be through Realtors and uh, at that time. But do we need to determine a, a value, a market value to place on that? I don't know. But I'm in favor of moving forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, seems to me we have the consensus, at least from two other, from two council members is to proceed. We have one council member that would like to have an executive session. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying that I would like to have an executive session. I was asking the question about it. And then I just want the consensus of council and just wanted to bring that forward. And then I just want the consensus of council and just wanted to bring that forward.
Okay, I apologize for misunderstanding. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think, Mr. Kara, the consensus seems to proceed as planned.
Okay, I, I will, the only thing I will require is the council's revised minimum bid acceptable to the city. It is part of the sale procedure. It's indicated in there that council will provide that. In fact, it doesn't necessarily need to be limited simply just to the minimum dollar amount. You can add other terms to the agreement as well. Any minimum qualifications, otherwise the default will just be industry standard. And so, but most importantly, staff will need the minimum bid acceptable to the city before we can list the property for sale.
Does the staff have a recommendation for that amount?
That's a great question. I think, you know, you raised a great point, Mr. Mayor, specifically on whether or not Wasco County's records can be reliable for valuation of real property. I think that in general, they can indicate a pretty, pretty solid, you know, ballpark as well as indicate trends. And so when it comes to trends, they appear to be pretty consistent. And so if you do take a look, again, I believe it's attachment D on the Wasco County Property Account Summary, you can sort of tell that the property clearly, like all real property in the city, for the most part, is going up in value. And there was a pretty substantial jump from tax year 2019 to tax year 2020. I, I don't think it would be outrageous for the council to accept a $50,000 minimum bid consistent with the Wasco County evaluation at $49,350. When you consider that in 2017, when Wasco County valued the parcel at $29,530, the council set the minimum bid to $30,000.
I agree with that logic.
Would that take a motion, Mr. Kara, or or just consensus of the council to go with $50,000?
Informal consensus in direction as all staff is requesting this evening. That is consistent with our sale procedure.
Okay, does anybody have a problem with setting a minimum of $50,000?
No problem here. It's a fair price.
I'm good.
Okay, I think you got consensus.
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you.
Any other business to come before the city council? Anybody? Last call.